Call our January 21st meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order, could we have our old call please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
All present.
Alright, this time I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand up for the invocation given tonight by Councilman Henry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag.
Let's bow with prayer please. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful, we're thankful for the wonderful community that we have, and we're thankful for all those who've worked in the past to make it so. Help us God to serve, and we thank you for that opportunity to serve with diligence, with wisdom, and compassion, and we ask these things in the name of your son and our precious Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented, are there any corrections or additions?
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Under Old Business, five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on January 7th, 2016, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Five B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-151233, amending the zoning code pertaining to the location of wireless communication towers and antenna arrays located within the property boundaries of a legal, non-conforming auto salvage yard in the CL Local Commercial and RM8 multifamily residential districts. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, councilmembers, mayor, I believe you've covered what this ordinance would do, and the amendment was approved by the planning commissioners recommended by the planning department, we've had no comments since first reading.
Alright, thank you, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Five C, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-151235, rezoning a portion of properties located on Lone Oak Drive and identified as parcels 12.0, 12.01, and 13.0 on tax map 66A Group A from RS10 Single Family Residential to CG General Commercial. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, councilmembers, this is the location of these properties, and it's actually a portion of these three parcels, and the portion being rezoned would begin at 150 feet south of the right-of-way of Lone Oak Drive, where that will remain to the north, and all the portions of these properties will remain zoned as single family. This proposed rezoning was recommended by the planning commission, subject to the combination of the portion of these three parcels rezoned with the remainder or with parcel nine which surrounds the track, which is the part that's CG here, and the planning department concurred with this recommendation, and we've had no comments since first reading.
Thank you, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Under New Business, seven A, consider resolution R-160101, authorizing the mayor to apply for the Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development, for Community Development Block Grant Funds. Melinda Kiefer.
Mayor and council, this is an annual Community Development Block Grant Round, and these are monies that pass through the state from Irving Housing and Urban Development Federal Funds. We applied for these funds last year for the Weston neighborhood as well, the Upper Cumberland Development District typically writes the grants and then facilitates them as well. We're asking for your approval to apply again this year. As you can see, there is no match required by the city of Cookeville, and currently there are 19 owner-occupied homes within that district that would be eligible for some home rehab through this grant program. I'd be happy to answer any questions and respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Seven B, consider approval to purchase ATS-I Conflict Monitor Tester Sole Source Provider, Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, our conflict monitor tester has become obsolete, and the manufacturer will no longer service or calibrate it. They are the sole source provider for the tester that is compatible with our conflict monitor. The price for the tester is $11,580, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Seven C, consider awarding bid for Roadscapes Project. Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we are pleased to come to this point in this process with TDOT and our Roadscapes Project. As you will recall, this is a project that would enhance the landscaping along exits 286 and 287 along Interstate 40, and our, just a little bit of background, this is, this project was, we received a grant back in 2009, we've had several extensions on this, and we're happy to get to this point today. We bid the project back in April, and the low bidder was deemed by TDOT to be non-responsive. We, in June, I came to you, and you voted to reject all the bids and to revise the specifications and rebid the project. We rebid the project and opened bids in October of this year and requested TDOT's concurrence with the low bid, and on January 12th of this year, we received that concurrence, and so I come to you tonight now to say that we're ready to approve the bids for construction for the enhancements along 286 and 287. We received two bids, and the low bidder is Haller Landscaping and Lawn Care at $50,502.60. I would recommend your approval. This is a budgeted item, and it is under our budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Rick, in order to John Leonard, it has been a long and winding road. Thank you for your diligence.
Thank you.
I think this is great to be able to decorate and to make our gateways to our city look better and enhance the visitors as they come in, so I appreciate, as he said, it is a long, we're a long road, but we're to the point now that we can finally bid this or get this going, so it's awesome. Anybody else?
All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven D, hold a public hearing on the annual progress report of the plan of services for the following annexation areas: Old Sparta, Horace Lewis Roads, Old Bridge Road, Falling Water River, Buck Mountain Dry Valley Roads, East Highway 70 North, Interstate 40, West Cookeville Interstate 40, Shagrag Road, Rebecca Place Bunker Hill Road, Bunker Hill Love Lady Roads, Free Hill Road, North Washington Avenue, South Willow Avenue, Bennett Road Extension, Old Stewart Road, Meadows Fisk Road, and Hall Bennett Road areas. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and councilmembers, I know how much you've looked forward to this report, so I'll try to be as quick as possible. Since 1998, we've been required to do an annual report on the implementation of plans of services for areas we've annexed since that date, and since that date, we've annexed 21 areas that require the reports, and prior to 2015, the plan of services have been fully implemented for seven of these areas. So we have 14 areas, which you just mentioned, which we have to report on. The report was recently published in the Herald Citizen, and I'll briefly go through these. The Old Sparta Horace Lewis Road area is now complete, that's when we can take off. In 2015, a major sewer extension project was completed in that area. These areas are depicted on the screen too. In the Old Bridge Falling Water River area, the only service remaining to be completed is sanitary sewer, and the plan of services specifies that it will be provided based on the same criteria that we use for other unserved portions of the city. In the Buck Mountain Dry Valley Road area, the services remaining there are sanitary sewer and electric service. The plan of services specifies that it will be based on the same criteria as other areas within the city, and it also specifies that electric service will be provided within three years after the city acquires the service area. All customers are expected to be served by the Cookeville Electric Department by the spring of this year. In the East Highway 70 Interstate 40 area, all services have been provided, with the exception of sewer. Required water service improvements were completed in 2015. The plan of services specifies that sewer will be provided based upon the same criteria that we use for other areas already in the city. Two phases of sewer installation have been completed, serving approximately 165 parcels. In the West Cookeville I-40 area, with all services have been provided, with the exception of water service, sanitary sewer, street lighting, and electrical service. The plan of services specifies that water service will be provided within five years after the city acquires the service area. That sanitary sewer will be provided based upon the same criteria that we use to determine the extension in other areas of the city, and that electric service and street lighting will be provided with one year after the city acquires the service area. Electric service and street lighting have been provided to approximately 95% of the area and will be completed as a part of the I-40 Fifth Interchange Project. The installation of water and sewer service in the Highlands Business Park was completed in 2013, and an evaluation of the acquisition of the water service area north of I-40 was completed in 2014. South of I-40, 33 water customs have been acquired. In the Shagrag Road area, all services are provided, with the exception of sanitary sewer. The plan of services specifies that it will be provided based upon the same criteria that we use to determine service in unserved portions of the existing city limits. The Rebecca Place Bunker Hill Road area, all services have been provided, with the exception of sewer. That plan of services specifies that sewer will be provided within 20 years after the effective date of annexation. Sanitary sewer has been provided to two customers in that area. In the Bunker Hill Road Love Lady Road area, all services have been provided, with the exception of sewer. The plan of services for that annexation area specifies that sewer will be provided within 20 years after the effective date of annexation. In the Free Hill Road area, all services have been provided, with the exception of sewer. That plan of services specifies that sewer will be provided within 25 years after the effective date of annexation. In the South Willow Avenue area, the plan of services specifies that sewer, or excuse me, the only remaining service to be provided is sewer. Street lighting was completed in 2015. The plan of services specifies that sewer will be provided based upon the same criteria that we use in other unserved portions of the present corporate limits. Sanitary sewer has been provided to 13 parcels in the area. The Bennett Road Extension area, all services have been provided, as specified, with the exception of water service and sanitary sewer. Water service rates for existing customers have been reduced to the inside-city rate. Negotiations have been initiated and I assume ongoing with the Double Springs Water Utility District for acquisition of the service area. The plan of services specifies that sewer will be provided based upon the same criteria that's used to determine whether to be extended in the present corporate limits. A sanitary sewer line under I-40, which is required to provide service north of the interstate, is under construction. For the Old Stewart Road area, all services, with the exception of sewer and streetlights, have been provided. The plan of services specifies that sewer will be based upon the same criteria as used for unserved portions of the present corporate limits. A sewer pump station has been installed and is in operation at the corner of Old Stewart Road and Bennett Roads to serve Academy Sports. The Cookeville Electric Department is working with the Upper Cumberland Electric Membership Cooperation, or cooperated, for the completion of the installation of street lighting, which is expected to be within one year. And lastly, the Meadows Fisk Road area, all services have now been completed for that area. This is a public hearing, so.
Yes, thank you, so we will open it up for the public, if anyone would like to speak on any of these items that he just mentioned, welcome to. Alright, we will close the public hearing portion, we are just receiving this, correct?
That's correct.
So no, no action needs to be taken by the council. Very good. Yes, sir?
I have a question.
Step to the lectern, please. Identify yourself, state your name and address, please.
My name's Robert Summers, I live in Rebecca Place, and a question that I have is, we were told at the time that the sanitary sewer would be installed in 10 years. I don't know how it got to be 20, but what the analogy was, that most of the sewers in the homes were 10 years old at the time of the annexation, and so they said sewers would be mandated at least within 10 years. And somehow or other, got changed to 20 here.
The original plan of services cost for 20 years, and that was what was established at the time the area was annexed, so I don't know where the 10 came from, but it has been 20. And the shortest we've ever specified was 15, and we just now completed that in the Old Bridge Horace Lewis Road area.
Well, we had a lot of neighbors that were at that meeting, and they all called me wanting to know how come it was changed, and I couldn't give them an answer that I would come to the meeting.
Well, if they're, and I don't want to speak for the councilor, or Mr. Kelly, but if you have, typically the way it works, if you guys are having septic tank or sewer issues, then you should come to the, and speak with Mr. Kelly to see what their plans are for providing sewer to that. The 20 years is a recommended timeframe, it doesn't mean it can't be completed sooner than that.
May I ask you, sir, the information that you received regarding 10 years, where did you get the information, or the impression that it was 10 years, is that something that you saw in writing at the original?
No, when they were talking of annexing the subdivision, we went to the meeting, all our neighbors went to the meeting, and that's where I got the information. The analogy was that most of the homes were 10 years old at the time of annexation, and they said that would get into that 20-year window, or whatever you want to call.
Are you having septic tank trouble now?
No.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Mr. Summers, I appreciate your comments. One of the things that may, that was helpful for me, and we've been listening to these, these plan of services being applied to recently annexed properties, and of course, they're all on a schedule of getting, getting those services provided under a certain timeline, correct me, and correct me, Mr. Mills, if I'm wrong, at any point in time. Now, that doesn't mean they're going to be done exactly at that time, sometimes they're done earlier, depending on, we've done, we've done some sewer projects a little bit earlier than, than the, than the sequenced amount of time, just because it, it just so happened we needed, that needed to be done. There was a project that needed to be done in there, and we took, we took advantage of it. I think pretty much the, I think the Old Sparta Road one was, was a part of that, we, it got their services a little earlier, and that may have.
We've extended there, in small portions of different areas across the city, the, this last, this Old Bridge annexation area, it was right at the 15-year period when the sewer was completed.
Yeah.
But we have done sporadic, and Mr. Kelly can speak on that, we've hit smaller areas all across, and it typically, again, maybe Mr. Kelly needs to speak on this, but typically, if there are problem areas, the city goes ahead and tries to act on those. And, you know, that would be key here.
Yeah.
And to be honest, if everybody's septic tanks are working, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to run sewer in there if nobody's going to tie onto the sewer system. Now, if there are problems in the area, then, you know, that's something we probably need to look at, but, you know, if everybody, if we run sewer in there, everybody starts paying the minimum sewer bill, whether they tie on or not, but the system doesn't work well unless, and Ron again, I don't want to, I'm not going to speak out of turn, if we don't have enough people tied over the line, it's not going to work well. But that's going to be key, are there enough residents in the subdivision that are willing to tie on to the sewer system if the line's extended? And if you're set, typically, our experience has been, again, I don't.
Ronnie, you're welcome to come up to the podium.
Our experience has been, if your septic tanks working, people typically don't want to spend the money to tie on to the sewer system, because it's fairly expensive to tie on to the sewer system.
But, Mr. Mills, like, when we annexed this area, and I assume it's back in 20, 25 years ago.
No, this area's been in since 2007.
2007.
It's right at 10 years, or halfway through the, what's required for the, approximately 2007. It may have the date on the screen there, my eyes, but anyway, it was approximately 2007.
Anyway, it's before my time, but, you know, when you annex an area, whether the homes are one year, if the house is a year old, or it's 25 years old in that area, the service is planned for 20 years from that point, it's the date that it's annexed in, and the plan of services start, it'd be 20 years from 2017, so it'd be 2027.
Yes, that's correct.
Regardless of how old the houses are in that development, even if they're 10 years old.
Well, yes, that's right, the date is specified, if a date is specified, and as you heard, we go through, some are, some aren't, but the ones that are, that date begins upon the effective date of annexation, or that timeframe.
So it will be 20 years from the day of annexation.
Well, that's when we're obligated to put it in by. It could happen sooner than that, especially if there are areas in there that are having septic tank issues.
Well, all's I brought up is that it was, we were told 10 years, and that would.
Well, it's been, in the plan of services that was adopted in the public hearing that was held, it was specified as 20 years.
So James, to this gentleman's point, you and your neighbors left that meeting that night under the impression it was 10, but, but, but what in reality on paper was typically the 20, is this just about communication, or to your, to your knowledge, there hasn't been any change of that plan?
No, there's never, we've not had, since I've been here, since 1998, since we've started, we're required to do the plan of services and annual report, we've never had plan of services amended.
Who, who conducted your meeting, sir? Was it a city meeting, or was it your neighborhood meeting?
It was a meeting at the annexation, when the city was trying to annex the subdivision.
Okay, so we could certainly pull the minutes of the meeting, and just to verify what, what was, and in fact, if what you said's correct, then obviously, there would have been a mistake on our part, we'll figure that out, and if not, then you'll understand why the plan says what it says, how's that?
That'd be fair enough, yes.
Alright, very good, so if you, afterwards, if you'll just leave us your contact information, and after staff has time to pull that, we'll get that information to you, okay?
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Alright, thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Seven E, receive report and recommendations from HFR Designs Incorporated for the master land use plans for Kane Creek Park and Parkview Park. Rick Woods.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. You, as evidenced by your, your undertaking, the envisioned Cookeville planning process coming up right away, you see the importance and the value of planning, and with that in mind, you authorized us to undertake some planning in our Parks Division, to do master land use plans for Kane Creek Park and Parkview Park, that would help us identify the best use of those spaces, and the potential for development there, should there be any development there, and what might go in those locations, and how it might be reconfigured, if it needs to be reconfigured, and, and we relied on a Citizens Committee to help us through that process. Three of those folks are here tonight, Randall McLeod, and Brian Maffett, and Andy Hill are all here, and they were part of that process, along with several others, and I thank you guys for, for being here tonight. And so, we met for several meetings and got input from the community to develop plans for, master land use plan for Kane Creek Park and Parkview Park, and we worked with HFR Design to develop that plan and lead us through that process, and they, they have specialists in parks development and parks planning. And so, three of those folks are here with us tonight, we're happy to have them, we're very excited about what we've come up with, what the community had to say, and they're here to present that information to you this evening, and so I'm going to introduce first Kyle Dunn from HFR Design.
Thank you, Rick. And it has been a privilege to work with the city of Cookeville, and the citizens that have been out. HFR Design, as y'all probably remember, we're an older company, we've been in business since 1910, and we've done a lot of park and recreation design work. We've done a lot of work at the city, within the city of Cookeville and Putnam County, too, working with the county school board, with other city projects over at Tennessee Tech, and it's been a privilege to work with Rick and the citizens. They're very involved, and they're very important for this process, and as Rick said, your visioning process you're going into in another week or so, that's going to be exciting for the city of Cookeville as well, and a lot of the things that come out, came out of our park plan could be implemented within that visioning process. I'm going to introduce Jim Gillum, and he will probably introduce Beth in a few minutes, but Rick, can I be, Jim?
Jim. Thank you, as Rick said, we've been working with the city, had three public meetings that we went through, gathered information with city staff, and also through the public, so that process has led us to where we are tonight, and we've got, I think, some exciting stuff to show you here on Kane Creek Park and also Parkview. The first thing, you know, coming up on Kane Creek Park, we, I don't know how well you can see it, I think you've also got some printouts there, if I'm not mistaken, but we looked at Kane Creek, and there were a couple items that were, I'm sorry, hit the wrong button, a couple items that were mentioned, mountain bike trails, and what is shown in Area 1 and Area 2, we've got blowups on, so I'll kind of, kind of scale over those at the beginning, but mountain bike trails, a footbridge, and a fishing dock in Area 1. Area 2, we've got some other facilities, outdoor pool, indoor pool, expanded pavilion, dog park, additional tee ball fields, disc golf, indoor ice rink that was brought up, and expanded walking trails. On the, on the south side of the property, there was an additional piece of land that came up early on, that we alerted us to, not that the city's made a commitment to buy it, which you would obviously know that, but, but the property owner, I think, there was some mutual discussion as to saying that the property is potentially available, so we looked at opportunities for that area as well. What I've got shown is a large loop trail, there was discussion about when you hold a 5K event, we don't have a facility to, to actually have one 5K length without looping or repeating some aspects of it, so with additional footage of the trail, the blue trail, the red trail, we could loop down to here and get that added length to that, so that, we felt like that was an ideal location there. There's also in the lower left corner, really hard to see, is additional parking and a shelter. The shelters, as we understood and heard, are highly used and then hard to get a halt of, so added a shelter down there in that location as well. Another important aspect is, I'm looking for it here on my list, the, there's an existing house, if I can see it, I think it's right in this vicinity, there was, where there was talk as to what the use of it could be, if it were, you know, completely torn down or renovated, and we looked at it as though it's, it's got some good usable space to it, that it would take some money to go in and update and renovate a few things, but it was, you know, valuable space that could be used for park offices. There's also some buildings on the site there that could be used and maybe better utilized for some building maintenance equipment. And kind of looping into that area, we looked at Frisbee Golf, expanding the course, you've got 18 holes now, but some of the larger tournaments, there was the desire to add holes, and that could expand the tournament to more teams, more, more revenue coming into the city as well, from the people coming out from town. One item that's really hard to see is a, an accessible dock, we had some people there really looking at, and even Beth, she's got a close, you know, family member there that is in a wheelchair, and, and that would be something that we looked at and seeing how we could expand the usage for all people, all citizens, and a gentleman actually pointed out to us, you know, it's called an EZ Dock, it allows them to, you know, transfer from, from land into the water as well, so that was an item that, that we've added to there. I think that's pretty well hit the highlights of Kane Creek, let's look at the next slide. This is the blowup of Area 1, a series of mountain bike trails, this is, you know, more of a wooded area hillside that, that we really felt like the, you know, met the terrain and the characteristic that, that is typical of a mountain bike trail. There's also the opportunity there that, a couple of connections into the main loop, and there's, you know, cycle cross that Rick has, has mentioned there as well, that that would have had the opportunity that you mix, you know, paved trail and the mountain bike trail for special events. This is the fishing pier that we, I'd mentioned a few minutes ago, and then the footbridge, which during the original development of the park, we understand that was, was incorporated as part of the plan, but kind of scrapped there based on budget necessities of cutting back, so we looked at re-implementing that and including it. Couple of pictures on the left over here, just ideas, kind of generic images of what, what one could expect on there. The, the discussion was also that the footbridge could be used more like a wood construction, pressure-treated, to match more of the, of the fishing pier. There was also even talk about more of a rope bridge, so a lot of opportunities, we, we are showing and talking more kind of ideas as opposed to design at this point in time. more kind of ideas as opposed to design at this point in time. On area two of Kane Creek, the number one item is, and we were looking at making this a focal thing, there was a lot of talk about, um, the water park in McMinnville, that is a big draw, people leaving, going out of town for, so I mean, we're looking at, and the aquatic center, both indoor and outdoor, and it could be built, you, either or, in phases, but, you know, this would really create that draw for the city and keep a lot of residents here in town and, and draw from around as well, but that's, that was that one activity focal point that was really, felt like was missing, and a lot of support through the community that we heard. Along with that was a, another pavilion, a large pavilion, talked about having restrooms, fireplace and grill for that facility, that, we felt like that was a good location because it, it complements the existing trail as well as making use of the parking lot that would be proposed for the, for the aquatic site. Another big need we heard was the, the dog park, we were showing graphically breaking up between large dogs and small dogs, and adding a, an additional parking lot, it's a thirty space parking lot that would serve as a trailhead, but also as access to the dog parks. Item number four, couple of tee ball fields, again, you know, heard the need and, and the desire for additional fields, these would be like a hundred foot fields, but that, adding these fields, we did not propose an, a new concessions building or restrooms, that they would be shared with the existing facility at the, at the two fields to the north, but we did show and include expanded parking, of course, we would bring that on down further to the south, the tiny of those fields. And item number five is where I mentioned the Frisbee Golf, Disc Golf, you know, expanding potentially eighteen holes there, that we felt like coming off the parking lot from your existing rec center would be a, a good starting point for that, it gives people access without having to build more reconstruction and support facilities to actually start at a, at hole number one. Blee, oh, I'm sorry, the item number eight is in addition of a walking trail, a loop that would go around, I think this ends up being a little over a half a mile loop, if I'm not mistaken, when you incorporate that. The next slide goes to Parkview, if you've got any questions on Kane Creek, you're welcome to, to take any of those now, or we can go on to Parkview, whatever yours is our.
I would, if you were going to talk about Kane Creek, one quick question, first of all, to HFR Design, thank you so much for your help with this, and particularly the citizens committee, we really just value that kind of input, and to Rick and your team, and you've shared with us some very exciting possibilities here, and we really appreciate that. I'd love to hear just a little bit more about, you touched on it, the, the, this idea of being accessible to physically handicapped, your thoughts about that, just a little bit, you, apparently you explore that to a degree, that, that's something I'm very interested in.
This is Ben Marcus, as Kyle mentioned, she's actually a Cookeville resident, and a graduate from Cookeville, so she's working in her hometown, which I know is going to be exciting.
It is, and I always tell people, Cookeville is still home, I'm here every couple of weekends, and, you know, all of my family's here. My brother is disabled, and that is one thing that I feel is very fortunate, he is a total blessing and, and an angel, you know, I love him very much, but it, he has given me the opportunity to see the needs of other people, you know, whether you're at a mall or going to an event or something like that. And one thing I love about Kane Creek and its beauty, your outdoors, the lake is just amazing, there are areas that would be difficult, you know, you have to worry about flooding concerns, I know there are times when we've had heavy rains, and I thought, oh, you know, let's take Ben and go to the park, and then I'm like, ooh, maybe we shouldn't, you know, with his stroller or wheelchair, and I think it is such a beautiful place that you would want everyone to be able to visit, you know, both, you know, local residents and then people from other, you know, surrounding counties, and so certain areas that you would want to look at with the trails to help improve them and accessible needs and, and things like that, but this easy dock that they proposed looks wonderful, it's not just a dock that you could have for fishing, but it would allow them opportunities to be able to get in a kayak or something, you know, like we've got the paddle boats there, so, it gives you the opportunity to be able to, you know, use the lake. And one thing that the gentleman also mentioned was even areas that a trailer, you know, could have better access to, and I tried to locate it close to that existing dock, so you have that opportunity of, of mixing the needs, but it's just, you know, it's a very important thing that, you know, to consider for everyone.
Thank you.
I hope that answered your question.
So, what, and of course, we can always come back to Kane Creek as well afterwards, but now let's move to Parkview. We've got two options on Parkview, a couple of the improvements are the same on option one and option two, and that's one thing that we heard loud and clear, the existing swimming pool site that is no longer in use, you know, looking at a, at an activity for that, and with the, with the neighborhood around here, we heard that not just the neighborhood, but the whole community for a skate park, and that's, that is the idea for this area, the hillside, the, the pool area and the building is revamping that and making it a complete skate, skate park, skate building, restrooms, and even a skate shop, and I've got, just like we had on Kane Creek, I've got some larger blowups on that one, so we can, can look at that one in just a few minutes, but that is what is consistent between option one and option two is the skate park in the, in the old pool area. The ball fields, that is, there's a lot of history, that's one thing we heard, you know, history sentimental fields, you know, the, the top field, the northern field is, we heard over and over, is the best field, you know, it's, it is the best field, but due to lighting and fencing, it hadn't been used in a couple of years, so, that, you know, given improvements on that field, hands down, I think that was the understanding it was the best field, it, you know, drainage wise and, and playability and everything else, so, in option one, what we're looking at is really upgrading existing facilities, there's some needs on concessions and restroom building for accessibility, a common theme that we heard throughout, but the existing building does not have, it's got steps leading into the restrooms that would need to be modified and, and corrected, so what we're showing is, kind of hard to see, but the white line does represent new fencing, but then also the yellow dots around are new light poles and new lighting, so that was, that's the idea that going to do, you know, really revamp in the existing location, the Bay Ruth Field, and upgrade restroom concessions and, and upgrade the bleachers as well. The lower fields, more lighting or increased lighting and, and revamp lighting, and maybe a little bit of fencing, a little bit, a little bit of bleacher improvements, but those fields really stay and remain intact, there's a new building, as you're aware, that you're for, for restrooms, so that's no need to make improvements on that. The other improvement outside the fields is we were proposing a new pavilion and, and playground, there was, you know, there was some mixed reaction between the playground, some thought it was great, some thought it might not be used much, but for planning and space planning purposes, it felt like that was important to show the playground and, and shelter up there. Option two, totally redoes the layout, what you'll see is three fields versus the four, you're familiar with the four fields you've got, which all of them have a different backstop location, so what we, what we worked towards is, of course, outfield dimensions come into play, but we were looking at, how can we turn the two fields around, make one common concession restroom, which it, it reduces maintenance cost, it gets all your, your improvements in one area, and totally redo and, and make new two fields, and the Bay Ruth Field, while it stays in the same location, it would be shifted a little bit, improve some of the areas around the bleachers and backstop area, and again, it would totally be rebuilt with new fencing, new lighting, new dugouts, concessions building as well, but what that stems from is a new parking lot coming in, really creating a focal point to drop off, you know, between the two fields, and then circling around to what I mentioned before with the pavilion and the, and the playground. We've got a large open area that, and any of the, we do have basketball courts shown down here as well, the basketball courts and the open field, there was a little bit of discussion on soccer, which of course, the city is, you know, invested in a soccer complex out on the north side of town, but a large open field that you could have pickup soccer games in here, and we could shift the, the basketball courts a little bit to the west, open up more area on that. That's pretty much the, the overview, and then if we go to the skate park area, really the idea was, is to create, this is where your existing entrance is that, that goes into, I think, the restrooms and the changing area, what we talked about doing is really opening it up, making a breezeway through here where you enter into the skate park area, men's and women's restrooms, the blue would be a storage area, and the purple, the idea is that someone would, would create a, a local skate shop, you know, so really that would be for, you know, private enterprise there. And this is the primary area that the swimming pool is now, the old pool, so that's, that's the large flat area, so incorporating some bowls and, and ramps and everything in that area, but this, as we know, was a large drop off, it's kind of simulated by the ramp on this lower right picture over here, so it gives you an idea that, you know, there's, the terrain works with the skate, skate park, and, and we were trying to enhance and, and work with that, so, that's pretty much the, the overview of the skate park, and that's the last slide we've got, we, there was a budget that we put together, we didn't include it in the slide, but if you've got any questions on all of that, or anything on Parkview or Kane Creek, I'd be willing to, to answer.
Thank you, we certainly appreciate receiving this report, it, it is very exciting, a lot of ideas, and I know this will dovetail in with our envision process that we're going to hopefully have Saturday weather permitting, that we can talk about, you know, things that people in the community want, I know, appreciate the, the citizen committee that served those of you that are here and the others that didn't make it tonight, and, and getting your input, as Councilman Henry said, and, and sharing your ideas and thoughts, and these are very important things, and we'll, we'll look through this, through the coming budget cycle and see what, what we can tackle a little bit at a time, and, and see what we can do, yes.
Dr. Hall, would you have something to comment?
Oh, sure, yes, yes.
For those of you that don't know me, my name's Glenn Hall, I'm a retired physician, I've been in Cookeville thirty-seven years, and when I came here, my two sons played baseball at Parkview on those parks, and now, this, these many years later, I've got two grandsons playing, so, I'm very interested in, in the scope of work that you're looking at, and I think it looks very nice for the local level. I'd like to speak to a more commercial side of it, and that is that when we, when my, when we, my family goes to watch our grandsons play, for instance, Crossville has a beautiful complex with ten fields in one area, so you can have tournaments, it's hard for us to have tournaments here, cause, you know, they reduce from four to three, and then Jerry Whitson, it's, we don't have enough in one area. I was wondering if you could look at Kane Creek and see if there wasn't some way, and for, most of you may not know, but on, on baseball fields, you have a grass infield, and on the softball fields, it's a dirt infield, so Kane Creek is primarily a softball complex, and Jerry, uh, Parkview is a baseball complex, so, we're losing a lot of our kids now to video games instead of going out and playing the all-American sport, which is baseball, and they need to get outside and do their mountain bikes and all that sort of stuff, and I'm, I'm certainly in favor of that, but I would like to consider some way we could have enough space and parking to have a, a baseball complex where we could have tournaments, and you're talking about several hundred people coming in once or twice a, a month during the baseball season for games, and, I mean, I know, I go to them, and Parkview looks pretty much the same as it did thirty-seven years ago when, when I moved here, it hadn't changed hardly any, and it's a wonderful, wonderful piece of property, I, I, I maybe even think you might want to consider maybe trading that for an area big enough where we could have a baseball complex, use that for some kind of commercial property or whatever, it's right there in the middle of town where it should be of value to people that have the wherewithal and the vision to develop it, and then have us a nice baseball complex somewhere and that we could have these tournaments for, and, and get more kids out playing baseball, I mean, when you go to these other places, our, our kids are just amazed, you know, they have these nice baseball complexes where you have four baseball fields around the center, just like you showed in, in that illustration, well, the Kane Creek one. Yeah, it's like this, Crossville's got two of those plus two more like this, so they have all those ballparks in one area, they got parking, they have concessions, they have restrooms, they got shade stuff for kids to play in, and then, and we play baseball. And, you know, there, if you, if you've got ten ballfields, that's twenty teams, and if you've got twenty teams, that's a lot of family members, and, and you can have more than twenty teams because you don't want, all of them won't be playing all at the same time, so you're talking about twenty-five or thirty teams coming to this town to, to play baseball and bringing their family, spend money. I think, I think it would pay off for you in the long run. That's my vision.
Thank you.
Listen.
Appreciate it. Any other comments?
Jim, I've got a question for you, you know, you've got a concept here for us, and, you know, like a menu, is there any estimates on what each of these projects that, you know, cause at some point when we do the envision and get some more feedback, we'll have more priorities on, on things, and I, the city's at a good point right now where we're looking at quality of life issues for the people that live here, just for what it sounds, the, the title sounds, but it's also economic development, that we do have these facilities in our, in our city, that being, it's an asset. I like everything you've done on, on Kane Creek, and I'm very interested in the aquatic center, indoor, outdoor pool. On the Parkview end, of, of the options you've given, I like option two, because of the topography issue over there, but one of the things I'm concerned with, not concerned, but have a, a view that we do have a need for a skateboard park, and your plans on Parkview, from a concept, how long, how long would it take to go from the concept to what, an estimate and some information that if we so chose, chose to do so, to put out for bid, to know what, you know, Mr. Woods and Mr. Davidson would have to be looking at as far as dollars and cents? Cause I'd, I'd like to see a skateboard park within twelve months if possible.
We have done some, some preliminary estimates on it, I think Mr. Wood said it is in our packet.
Right.
I gave it to you.
Okay.
Earlier.
It, it definitely is not on the slides, but we, I've got a copy of it here that I brought with us, but I mean, we've got line items, you know, by line item of each aspect there that we had gone through, so we've got a number put to it.
Okay.
So I mean, I've got, you know, a number I can show you on the skate park, off the square footage that, that we were talking about, you know, there's, I, I forgot the number, the, the last meeting we held was November twenty-second, and I told Rick, I said, honestly, it seems like that was forever ago, and, you know, a little bit of the detail, but I knew at the time the square footage of the, of that skate park, you know, the average dollar per square foot on a skate park is, is in that fifty to sixty dollars per square foot, because what we heard loud and clear is that we don't want or need a concrete slab with modular ramps.
Hey, do you got, does your company have experience building a skate park?
We did the one in Cooke, uh, I'm sorry, in We did the one in Cook, I'm sorry, in Crossville, which was concrete slab with, with modular ramps. But that is, no, we, we do not. That was something that a specialty person needs to come in. You know, a couple of the people here in the audience, and they've got, you know, user experience and, and connections there. I mean, what we could do is we could facilitate, you know, putting a team together, you know, working with locals, getting more ideas. But I would not, I would be doing you a disservice if I said, you know, yes, let's go do the skate park.
Well, I appreciate you, honestly. Years ago, there was a developer up here bought a beautiful piece of property and was going to build a golf course on it and sell lots in a residential community. But he didn't know anything about golf. Now, he's got some nice houses, but a terrible golf course.
...
So the input, the input from the community, skateboard, skateboarding definitely want them involved in this, because they know what they want. We don't want to build something they don't like.
Absolutely.
I might be able to answer some of your questions a little bit too. They do have professional skate park designers that do the construction. I've been talking with a company out of Washington, it's called Grind Line, just to kind of get some ideas. They will actually send somebody out to kind of look at the facility, come up with some concepts, help with the budgeting. They do step by step through the whole process. So I think it's important to get them involved, or a company like them at some point, to kind of connect those dots together, where we can kind of figure out exactly, square footage wise, what the, it's going to cost to implement this. But they've got a lot of neat stuff. Like some of the stuff I figured out in a packet, and I can email it. I had sent it to Chuck, but had some information. They sent me kind of a startup deal. 64 cents of every dollar built on the construction of it. They actually use, in the community, buying materials, you know, sales tax, lodging, that kind of stuff. So it's not all just going out. They'll guarantee it, they'll come back a year later and inspect it, they'll help do grand openings. It's kind of a full-service deal. So you get somebody involved with that kind of experience, and you let them run the show. Really, you involve the skateboarders in the community, but they'll kind of oversee everything, make sure it runs seamlessly.
Right.
So that helps.
Yeah. This is some, this is definitely a community that's underserved right now from, you know, the skateboarders.
Sure.
And that was proven to me the other night going home. It was dark, it was about 33 or 34, and I saw a couple of young men on, on the sidewalk. And, you know, if they have that much passion to be out after dark in that call, there's, there's a strong, strong bond about that activity. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the agenda portion of our meeting. This time we'll have time for citizens who want to speak to the council about any matter that wasn't on the agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to do so?
We don't have any.
All right. Council members, we have anything from anybody?
Yes.
We will be adjourned.